Welcome to our regular city council meeting. And we will begin with agenda item number one, the roll call from Aubrianna. Would you please call the roll?
Chetum?
Here.
Lorick?
Here.
Bingo?
Mansfield?
Here.
Nichols?
Here.
Paulson?
Here.
Blad?
Okay, and we will proceed with the pledge of allegiance. And after that, we'll keep standing for an invocation from Pastor Jim Jones representing Blazing Grace Ministries.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for giving this opportunity again. In the Bible Psalm 139, verse 14 says, "I will praise you, for I am fearfully and wonderfully made; marvelous are your works, and that my soul knows very well." And then in 1 Thessalonians, chapter 5, verse 17, it says, "Pray without ceasing." It is because of the image of God that is in us that we have that need and desire to pray without ceasing. So let's pray. Father, we thank you today for this city. We thank you for this country. Lord, we are beginning a new year. New ideas. A new president. We just ask Father God right now that from our nation's capital, all the way to our city council, that you would bless those who are in leadership. But that you would also have them come to you in prayer over things before making decisions. You tell us to pray before we make any decision. We just ask, Lord God, that those in leadership would do the same. I ask your blessing over them all. I ask you to put your angels around them to keep them safe and protected. Father, we thank you for this country that we live in, that we can freely assemble, that we can pray publicly. I've been through places, Lord God, that that is not possible. It is actually a death notice if it's done. So we thank you for that in this great country, Lord God, and for those that have fought for this country, Lord. We thank you for our veterans and for those that are in country and those that are active right now. Be with us, Lord, also with our long enforcement and firefighters, our first responders, our paramedics. They put themselves in danger each day. I ask your protection over them. And I ask your protection and your wisdom over the council and over our mayor. And I just ask, Father God, that you would just let this city have a year of prosperity and peace. We thank you and we glorify you. And may all we do glorify you, Lord, in your precious name, Jesus Christ. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Moving on to agenda item number three. We have the consent agenda. I'll make this a little bit bigger. The following business items will be approved by one motion and a vote. If any one member of the council so desires, any matter listed can be moved to a separate item, separate agenda item. A, material claims. Council may wish to approve the material claims for the period of December 16 to 31, 2024. B, treasurer's report. Council may wish to approve the treasurer's report for November 2024, showing cash and investments as of November 30, 2024. C, community development block grant advisory committee appointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's appointment of Dakota Niford to serve as a member of the Community Development Block Grant Advisory Committee, filling a long-term vacancy. Dakota's term will begin January 3, 2025 and expire January 3, 2028. D, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board Appointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's appointment of Amy Comendador to serve as a member of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, replacing Catherine Hickock, whose term expired. Amy's term will begin January 3, 2025 and expire January 3, 2027. E, Pocatello Regional Airport Commission reappointments. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's appointments of Kristen Jensen and Molly Beceras to continue serving as members of the Pocatello Regional Airport Commission. Kristen's term will begin January 4, 2025 and expire January 4, 2027. Molly's term will begin January 18, 2025 and expire January 18, 2027.
Madam President?
Councilmember Chetum.
Madam President, I would move to approve agenda item number three, the consent agenda items A through E.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by councilmember Chetum and a second by councilmember, hey, um, hey, Paulson, sorry. Aubrianna, will you please call the roll?
Chetum?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Agenda item number four is proclamations. We have none, so we'll move on to agenda item number five is the calendar review. Council may wish to take the opportunity to inform councilmembers of upcoming meetings and events that should be called to their attention. Council meetings. On January 9, we have 9:00 AM council, city council work session, immediately followed by a council goal-setting meeting. January 16, 5:30 PM, we have a clarification meeting. And 6:00 PM, a regular city council meeting. Other events. Christmas tree collection sites are available through January 11. Boxes are provided at City Hall. Rainy Park on South Arthur and Sister City Park entrance on Pocatello Creek Road for Christmas tree disposal. Trees will be chipped and used in landscaping projects. Be sure to remove all strings, wires, and other objects to avoid damaging the city's wood-chipping equipment. January 18, Ski for Free Day at Mink Creek Nordic Center. This is sponsored by ICCU. Parking, trail passes, rentals, and mini lessons will be free from 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Rentals will be offered on a first-come, first-served basis and will be available in two-hour time slots. January 20, city offices will be closed to observe the Martin Luther King Jr. Day. Garbage and recycling pickups will be on schedule. Applications for the 2025 Pocatello's Promise of Tomorrow Mayoral Scholarship for Students program are now being accepted through February 28. A reminder, keep sidewalks clear of snow and ice. When clearing sidewalks and driveways of snow, please do not place snow in the street. It becomes a driving hazard. And agenda item number six is a public hearing, zoning map amendments for 155 Willard. This time has been set aside for the council to hear comments from the public regarding a request from Brandon DeFossis. Mailing address 5109 Tree Valley Road, Chubak, Idaho, 83202, to rezone property located at 155 Willard Avenue from Commercial General CG to residential medium-density single-family RMS. So first, pardon? So I declare the public hearing open. I didn't do that hard enough, did I, Rick? So I need to ask the city council if they've had any ex parte contact on this issue. Seeing none, okay. We're going to first hear from the applicant. If the applicant would like to come forward and give their presentation, you have up to 10 minutes, however long.
Thank you guys for letting me talk to you. I am Brandon DeFossis. I appreciate the time. So we are just looking at rezoning this to a residential, we're going to put a single-family home on it. It went for sale a couple of months ago, and the current owner did not know that it was commercial. So we are just going through that process so I can purchase it and put a single-family on it. It's just a, it's a perfect spot for it. There's lots of, I mean, there's some houses around it, and that's the only infill lot that's sitting there. So might as well put something there. We need housing, so. Cool. Thank you guys.
Thank you. And now we will hear from staff. If staff would come forward, we have Jim Anglesey. And I'll give you your presentation.
Good evening, Council President Lorick and members of the council. Jim Anglesey, long-range planner. The subject property consists of two parcels and is currently split-zoned, where the north half is zoned RMS and the south half is zoned CG. The request is to rezone the south half from CG to RMS so that the property in its entirety would be zoned as residential, which aligns with the city's future land use map. At a public hearing held on December 11, 2024, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the application. And staff finds that the request is in compliance with the criteria as listed in City Code, Section 1702, 17E. This ends my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions the council may have.
We have councilmember Chetum.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm curious about this. When I looked at the maps and drive by and look at the property, how the devil did this get to be Commercial General?
It's a good question.
It seems it should have been residential all along. Why it is what it is, I have no idea. And it makes me wonder if we shouldn't be rezoning the rest of those houses residential.
Yeah, and that's a question I'm not sure how to answer. There's a good three or four blocks of oak that are the same way, about halfway up the 100 blocks is zoned CG. And within the future land use map, when we did that exercise, we adjusted it to do more of a fine tune for future zoning. We have several places like that throughout the city that we hope to address in the future.
That would, you know, it would seem to me to be appropriate. It's so a property, and it doesn't have to go through this process just to build a house in obviously residential areas. This is, it's an odd one.
Yeah, I had the same thought as well. I think it is odd, but making this residential, I think, I mean, it makes sense for the reasons Rick just said, but also just bringing our zoning map sort of into compliance with what it should be. I agree that we should kind of look at that whole area. If there's a way to do that without having to have every single property owner come in one by one, it would be good to look at that.
Yeah, we are able to initiate zone, rezones as a city as well.
Yeah, I think it'd be a good idea because it just makes sense. Do we have any other questions for staff? Nope, okay. So my next question is, was there any written correspondence submitted for the record? Madam Clerk?
I've not received any correspondence.
And staff has not either.
Staff, okay. Thank you. So we'll move on to testimony. There's a three-minute limit for testimony. And is there any testimony by those supporting the application? None. Any testimony by those uncommitted on the application? And testimony by those opposed to the application? None. Okay. Normally, we ask for a rebuttal by the applicant, but it doesn't seem like there's any need unless you want some, to say something else? Okay, sounds good. So the public hearing is now closed? It bounced that time, Rick. To say, sorry, I declare the public hearing closed. Council, this time, this item is before you. How do you want to proceed? How do you wish to proceed? Councilmember Mansfield?
My understanding, based on the question on the clarification meeting, is that this opportunity is for council to give direction. Is that correct, Jared?
Yeah, you're, I might have not have said it as well as I could have in the clarification meeting. Give direction as to whether to proceed or to not proceed. And if you want us to proceed, you can just move to approve it now. But the actual approval comes with the council decision, which would be the next step if the council wishes to approve it. So if you want to direct a decision, be prepared and an ordinance be prepared after the decision in favor of the rezone, that can happen. Or you can just make a motion to approve, and then everything will follow. I probably made it more muddy than I did before.
Tell you what, council president, I would move to approve the application and proceed with the decision and ordinance to be prepared, following successful approval of said agenda item.
I'm sorry.
You're fine. No, I was, I'm still trying to figure out what Jared said, you know?
So am I.
As long as our attorney approves, okay. We have a motion by councilmember Mansfield, and we actually had a second by councilmember Paulson. That was a soft one. So Aubrianna, would you please call the roll?
Mansfield?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Chetum?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Lorick?
Yes. Okay. Agenda item number seven is bid acceptance and award Mountain View Cemetery tree pruning. Council may wish to award the following bids for the Mountain View Cemetery tree pruning and removal project and authorize the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents, including change orders, subject to legal department review. A, top-notch trees in the amount of $124,400. And B, intermountain tree service in the amount of $39,600. Funding for the project has been provided through the USFS Urban and Community Forestry Grant. Councilmember Chetum?
Madam President, I would move for approval of the bid acceptance and award for the Mountain View Cemetery tree pruning project, including the authorizing the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents, including change orders, subject to legal department review as outlined in agenda item number seven.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion by councilmember Chetum and a second by councilmember Mansfield. Aubrianna, would you please call the roll?
Chetum?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Lorick?
Yes. Okay. Agenda item number eight is items from the audience, and no one has signed up. So we will move on to agenda item number nine is the state of the city. And I would like to begin just with a few words. First of all, Mayor Blad was very disappointed that he wasn't able to be here tonight because this is such a big moment, really, for, as the mayor, to be proud of what the city has accomplished in the year. So he's here with us in spirit and just asked me to stand in for him, so I'm happy to do that. I wanted to just say a couple of words. We're going to see a video that covers all the accomplishments of the city. And you'll see that there's been a lot that's been done. In general, the state of the city is very good. We're financially strong. Everything is going well. We're doing a lot of work. And I think there's a couple of unique things that allowed us to do a lot more this year. We normally, our main role as a council is to manage the money, to manage the tax money. But there's other money as well. And this year, we had to finalize our ARPA money, the American Rescue Plan Act money. And so that was a substantial amount of additional funds that didn't come from the taxpayers that allowed us to do a lot of extra projects and a lot of nice things that we maybe normally wouldn't get to do. So I think there's the, the sort of normal, regular services that we provide, and we try to manage those and do as well as we can. But this year also, we had a lot of other funds that allowed us to do more than that and really go above and beyond. The other thing was grant money. We really just, our staff did a tremendous job of bringing in a lot of grant money, like the tree project that we just heard about. So those grant monies and ARPA monies, it was our responsibility to manage those as well. And I think we've had a very good year and been able to provide a lot of extra things to our citizens. So I will let us hear about that, and then we'll just close at the end. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Brian Blad, mayor of Pocatello. The city of Pocatello accomplished many projects during fiscal year 2024. Using the $10.3 million in American Rescue Plan Act or ARPA monies awarded to Pocatello. The city council and I reviewed and approved staff's recommendations on how to use monies to benefit our organization and the community. We are very pleased with the progress made, and you will hear more about these incredible projects directly from the departments throughout this year's State of the City report. The city council and I always have taxpayers in mind when we work with city staff to create our annual budgets. Tax dollars plus other department-specific revenue sources pay for these departments. Street operations, recreation, cemetery, Pocatello Regional Airport, and Marshall Public Library. Property taxes also help pay for city's liability insurance and the general fund. The general fund is comprised of police, fire, and Parks Department as the top three funded departments, but also include animal services, mayor and council, and various other departments because we know property tax rates are important to everyone. We monitor statewide property tax information from the Associated Taxpayers of Idaho, or ATI. ATI is an independent, nonpartisan, not-for-profit association that encourages effective and responsible government through research and education. Each year, the ATI publishes research on property tax levies in the state of Idaho. Their most recent publication, State of Idaho 2023 Property Tax Levis, was released in April 2024. This chart shows Pocatello's property tax rate as a city only compared with other cities with a 0.5% levy rate and higher. This second chart shows where Pocatello lands when you consider all five taxing districts on Pocatello residents' property tax bill. This rate includes Bennett County, city of Pocatello, School District Number 25, Bennett County Road and Bridge, and Ambulance District. As you can see, Pocatello's property tax rate continues to drop. This has been accomplished through State of Idaho legislation and good decision-making by your elected mayor and city council. We are thrilled to unveil Pocatello's new logo and tagline. After working with Hub Collective for the past year, we now have a brand-new logo that accurately represents our beautiful city surrounded by mountains. Our goal with this rebrand is to unify all city departments, inspire pride in our community, and set ourselves apart from neighboring cities. Developing a brand identity attracts potential residents, bolsters business, and boosts tourism. We've seen many cities around us invest in rebranding to help stimulate investment, growth, and excitement from the community. The old logo has served us well, but as our city grew and evolved, it was time for a change. This rebranding initiative is more than just a logo and a tagline, the one and only. It's a symbol of Pocatello's commitment to progress and innovation. The new style guideline includes letterhead layout and templates, standard name tags, email signature, mayor's newsletter, photography usage guidelines, sign concepts, vehicle design, building signage, promotional materials, design templates, and more. In closing, I'm overwhelmed with pride as we showcase the new rebrand. We believe this initiative is a testament to our city's unwavering spirit and commitment to growth. We invite everyone to join us in celebrating the new look and feel of Pocatello. Now I will have our department heads talk about fiscal year 2024 projects.
Hello, my name's Roger Shai. I'm the chief of police for the Pocatello Police Department. This year was another successful one at the Pocatello Police Department. We accomplished a long-term goal of completing a youth leadership academy. This was our pilot program of approximately 20 youth ages of 15 to 18. During the week, they were taught leadership principles and could apply them in real-world applications. They got to train and learn from members of our department and the community. Along with leadership training, the members of the YLA learned about firearms, emergency vehicle operations, tactical first aid, field movement, teamwork, communication, and our community. The week was capped with the youth putting their skills to work in a field training exercise, or FTX. Some of the guest speakers were Emma Shai, ISU head coach Cody Hawkins, and Leif Baden from Echelon Front. Some of the graduates then assisted with our middle school summer program. We worked with many sponsors to help make this program happen. This was a great team effort from all members of the department. Another project we worked on was our men's locker room. The original facility's open in 1993. Years of wear and tear had an impact on the facility. The new lockers will have power and ventilation. This will assist in powering all of the technology that officers now have. It will also give the members of the department needed space to store their equipment. The project has been many years in the making, and it is a much-needed upgrade to our building. During the year, several awards and certificates from Peace Officer Standards and Training, or POST, were earned. This includes four life-saving awards where officers saved a man who was trapped under a log in the Portnitz River. Without their efforts, the man could have drowned. Several life-saving and two meritorious service awards were received this year. Throughout the year, we received several certificates from POST. Officers received seven basic, three intermediate, five advanced, and one management certificate. Lieutenant Joshua Hancock graduated from the Southern Police Institute Administrative Officers Course, class number 151 in Louisville, Kentucky. This intensive 12-week program is mission-critical for succession planning. Examples like this show that our members of our department are constantly living up to the example of community commitment.
I'm Chief Ryan O'Hern from the Pocatello Fire Department and Bennett County Ambulance. 2024 was a busy year. At the beginning of 2024, the Pocatello Fire Department enhanced our ability to analyze and collect data. We're now using a company called Dark Horse Emergency to give us greater ability to analyze our response metrics to make better decisions about emergency service delivery to our community. Another area that we are improving our ability to respond to our citizens' needs is with our new station alerting system. The city council and county commissioners invested in a new station alerting system for our fire stations. This system will shorten the amount of time it takes to alert fire and EMS personnel about an emergency. This will lead to quicker response times and improve service to our community. The Pocatello Fire Department also invested in training for our employees. Response Training Group, one of the nation's lead training companies for fire apparatus driver training, delivered a course to six of our engineers. This course was a train-the-trainer course and will allow us to improve the capabilities of all our personnel. This will improve safety for our employees and the citizens we serve. Four of our personnel obtained paramedic certification this year. Thanks to a grant through FEMA, seven additional employees started the paramedic program at Madison Fire Department. This local resource has been valuable to transition some of our personnel from EMTs to paramedics. This will allow us to put more advanced-level providers in the community. We had dozens of Pocatello firefighters out on We had dozens of Pocatello firefighters out on eight wildland deployments. Six of these deployments were in Idaho and two were in neighboring states. These deployments are a great opportunity to assist other communities in Idaho. They also provide training and experience for our personnel. The Pocatello Fire Department has been able to use these deployments as alternative revenue source to help finance future apparatus purchases. Residents of Pocatello may have noticed our controlled burn activity in the spring of 2024. Crews participated in the controlled burning of slash piles as part of a program aimed at reducing the fuel for wildfires in residential areas on the East Bench. As your fire chief, I would like to thank our employees for their dedication to our citizens. As a department, we would like to thank the community for their ongoing support. We are very fortunate to live and serve in such a great city.
Hi, I'm Tom Kirkman, Director of Public Services for the City of Pocatello. Fleet Services is an internal service department with a mission to evaluate methods to develop a more coordinated and consistent approach to managing the city's fleet assets, along with improving services, service levels, and decreasing fleet-related costs. In fiscal year 2024, Fleet Services finalized and implemented a new fueling station located at the facility on Garrett Way. The new fuel station has four below-ground tanks allowing for increased redundancy. The site also gives operators the ability to add diesel exhaust fluid at the pump instead of having to fill at separate locations, which has increased efficiency. This fuel site serves approximately 600 assets and 475 users. The sanitation department assumed an additional role in the city's recycling program in an effort to maintain and improve recycling efforts within the city, which currently has a 77% participation rate. In August 2024, we began operating the recycling center at 3034 Garrett Way. This facility receives curbside and cardboard collections that are baled and then shipped to a sorting center in Boise. We anticipate these efforts will reduce our recycling costs by 50% and will be a great benefit for the community. Additionally, the sanitation department implemented a clean route to our operations. Crews pick up litter and debris from the right-of-way in an effort to maintain and beautify the city. The street services department improved over 40 miles of roadway in its annual pavement management program, utilizing targeted treatments such as fog sealing, micro sealing, and paving. In addition, pavement markings throughout the city were maintained and installed to enhance traffic safety and mobility. Additionally, the street services department, in coordination with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, effectively maintains 7.2 miles of the levee system as part of the Portnife River Flood Damage Reduction Project. This plan helps protect approximately 1,332 homes and buildings worth over $258 million in property values. In '24, the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers employed an unmanned aircraft system to collect high-resolution aerial imagery for monitoring infrastructure conditions and assessing land erosion. This data provides the street services department with insight that support a more effective management plan. The department continues to make technological strides by incorporating road AI technology that accurately assesses current pavement conditions on the city's 277 centerline miles of maintained roadway. The data is collected in real-time and can be analyzed throughout the year, facilitating a more informed decision regarding pavement maintenance and rehabilitation. Additionally, the department uses AI technology and traffic signal data in real-time during weather events, utilizing tools such as heat maps and vehicle travel time delays to accurately identify problematic areas, which improves the development of effective winter maintenance plans during storm events.
I'm Anne Butler, Parks and Recreation Director. This year was a big year for us, and I'm going to highlight some of the biggest projects. In June, the new Idaho Central Credit Union splash pad opened. This summer, the splash pad was full of toddlers, youth, and adults finding relief from the heat in our 3,000 square feet of wet zone. Alongside the splash pad, Brooklyn's playground received a new turf surfacing. The before-and-after photos really show how needed this upgrade was. Working with Brooklyn's buddies, more additions to the playground will be made. In late June, our street department completed the repaving and sealing of all the roads inside the city cemetery. This was many years past due and has made the overall appearance of the cemeteries not only beautiful, but very efficient for our visitors. In July, we celebrated Doug Milder's memory with his family as we opened the beautiful water slides at Ross Park Aquatics Complex. The water slide, designed by Splash Tacular, features two slides to choose from. Both slides tower approximately 35 feet high. The green slide is an open-air design with many twists and turns, leading to a runout. The blue slide features a closed concept with translucent bands that create flashing light effects as you work your way quickly to the runout. These slides are fun for all ages. In August, the Con Gilmore Pickleball Courts were opened in Lower Ross Park. These courts are ADA-accessible, feature a 4mm Plexicoat surface, and have LED lighting. The courts have been wildly popular so far. We were excited to share the opening with Con Gilmore and his family for his many years of service to our community as a former Parks and Recreation Director. In September, the Community Recreation Center renovation was completed. In a partnership agreement with the Portnife Health Trust, major changes were accomplished. The remodel featured the addition of a brand-new 3,200-square-foot weight room. Additional improvements and updates include a new redesigned front entrance, new ADA restrooms, new offices, new flooring, new ceiling tiles, lots of new paint, new exterior facade, new lighting, new signage, and landscape enhancements. This project poured approximately $1.5 million into the building. Thanks to the Portnife Health Trust for their generosity in this monumental project. If you've not seen the Community Recreation Center, please stop in.
Hello, I'm Brett McLean, Planning and Development Services Director. In 2024, the Planning Division worked with the community and developers to improve and increase the commercial and residential footprint within the city. Additionally, the division partnered with the Building Department and other departments to implement a new online process for land use applications called Community Development. This new online application portal called eTrackit went live this summer. Working with the Historic Preservation Commission, the division completed an update to the city's downtown development guidelines. This update helps to create clarity and ease in maintaining the city's historic downtown character. For the Community Development Block Grant and LED Safe Healthy Homes, fiscal year 2024 was one of the most impactful for the Neighborhood and Community Services HUD-funded grant programs. Through the city's Renewal Home Rehab Grant and Loan Program, as well as the LED Safe and Healthy Homes programs, we were able to assist 31 households, providing over $393,000 to preserve affordable housing for Pocatello residents. The Grants Division was very active in 2024, applying for 13 state and federal grants totaling for over $30 million for infrastructure, parks, housing, trails, and more. Of the 13 grants, the city was awarded eight of these for over $18 million. The city is required to provide $195,000 in match dollars, and of that match, only $65,000 has come from the general fund, which means for every federal dollar received, the city provides just one-third of a penny. In conjunction with the Public Works and Public Services Departments, PDS completed the Safe Streets and Roads for All Action Plan, which was adopted by the city council. After nearly a decade of fundraising efforts, the city was able to complete Phase One of the Brady Chapel Restoration and Repair Project. The repairs included exterior brickwork and masonry work to repair the facade. In addition, the historical pinnacles were reinstalled on the chapel, returning a key architectural and visual feature to the chapel. The project was completed thanks to grants from the Idaho Heritage Trust, National Trust for Historic Preservation, Joanna Favreau Fund, Friends of the Brady Chapel, private donations, and city general funds.
Hello, my name is Jeff Mansfield. I'm the Public Works Director and City Engineer for the City of Pocatello. The Engineering Department saw multiple projects throughout the year. One of the key projects was the intersection of Hawthorne and West Quinn Road. The Hawthorne and West Quinn intersection began as a four-way stop with traffic backing up significantly in all directions during peak hours. The Bannock Transportation Planning Policy Board determined that traffic at this intersection had exceeded its design capacity and improvements were needed. The intersection facilitated over 10,000 daily trips before construction, and this number was projected to increase. The total estimated cost of the project was approximately $4 million. The City of Pocatello paid a 7.34% match, and the City of Chubbeck reimbursed the City of Pocatello 25% of that match. Utility work for this project included natural gas, electrical, irrigation lines, communication lines, as well as stormwater facilities and retaining walls, property acquisitions, utility adjustments and relocations, and irrigation piping permits were also required. This project has been a cooperative effort between the city, state, and private contractors. It now has all lanes open and the traffic light is fully functional. The intersection was widened and upgraded with a state-of-the-art traffic signal, ADA-accessible sidewalks, and crosswalk signals. Additionally, bike lanes were added, improving mobility for vehicles, pedestrians, and bicyclists. The Engineering Department completed several pedestrian safety projects. In recognition of the council's goals to improve pedestrian safety, the Engineering Department has made it a priority to seek out funding opportunities to complete ADA and pedestrian projects throughout the city. One such project is the Hawthorne Road and Jensen Street Child Pedestrian Improvements Project. The City of Pocatello was awarded $250,000 from the Children's Pedestrian Safety Program, which required no match funding. This project updated the intersection of Hawthorne Road and Jensen Streets, which is located near two schools, three parks, and has been the site of pedestrian accidents. The project includes updates to irrigation, sidewalks, curb and gutter, and the addition of rectangular rapid-flashing beacons. Another project that has improved sidewalks and pedestrian safety is the Bonneville Neighborhood Sidewalk Improvement Project. This was identified as an opportunity to improve accessibility and access to public transit stops. This project was funded by $300,000 in federal grants provided by the Pocatello Regional Transit Authority and the Community Development Block Grant. Improvements have been made to curbs, gutters, and sidewalks in the Bonneville neighborhood, including in front of the Senior Activities Center and the Levitt Center. As more grants are received, such as the RAISE Grant and the EPA Community Change Grant, the Engineering Department looks forward to pursuing additional projects in an effort to make further improvements that will benefit the community.
Hi, I'm Hannah Sanger, Administrator of the Science and Environment Division. And today, I'm going to talk to you about a number of accomplishments of our division in 2024. So the Portnoy Valley Environmental Fair first, several thousand people came out to enjoy the environmental fair in 2024. Its new location, we were at Lookout Point, which was fabulous. Fair growers enjoyed free hot dogs, french fries, and picked up many goodies from all the vendors. This free community event celebrates Pocatello and provides an opportunity for everyone to share ideas and practices that they have for improving our environment. We also received over $20 million of grants in 2024, working with the Planning and Engineering Department and other divisions around the city. These were supporting river restoration, parks, sewer-ing, and greenway trails. This includes everything from funding to redoing Centennial Rainy Park, which I'm super excited about, extending the greenway along the river from the Pacific Recycling Trailhead downstream, funding to extend the greenway south from the AMI Trailhead on South Second all the way to South Fifth Ave, improving stormwater management at Constitution Park, funding for bathrooms and drinking fountains in city parks, and funding for tree planting, tree planting, and maintenance throughout the city. We also got funding for wildfire risk reduction in our open spaces and funding to design improvements to the Old River Oxbows on the east side of the railroad tracks north of the highway ponds.
Hi, I'm Richard Bigelow, Building Official for the City of Pocatello. In FY24, the total number of inspections completed by the Building Department was 5,675. Permits issued through the Building Department totaled 3,196. Of that number, 134 were new residential building permits and 17 were commercial building permits. Additionally, the Building Department, along with other departments, have implemented a new permitting and licensing software that went live July 29. This new software provides contractors and homeowners an online self-service portal to increase efficiency with permitting, licensing, and inspections.
Hello, my name is Skylar Beeby. I'm the Director of Pocatello Regional Transit. PRT had a great year. We experienced ridership growth with over 9,000 increased boardings from the previous year and performed nearly 200,000 overall passenger trips. PRT was also able to install a new fixed drought bus stop shelter at Sixth and Sublet, providing a welcome sight for many patrons who regularly use this bus stop. Funding for the project was made possible thanks to a grant from the Federal Transit Administration, along with local match provided by the Housing Alliance and Community Partnerships. In early spring, Idaho Central Credit Union donated $1,000 to sponsor PRT's 2024 Summer Youth Program. Thanks in part to ICCU's contribution, all riders aged 18 and younger were able to ride PRT's fixed drought services for free from the end of May through August. Nearly 3,600 trips were performed for youth, providing them access to the community for summer jobs, visiting friends, enjoying parks and recreation centers, and so much more. We appreciate all the support, and from all of us here at PRT, we look forward to continuing to serve our community's mobility needs.
Hello, my name is Justin Armstrong, Water Superintendent for the City of Pocatello. In support of our mission to deliver a safe and reliable source of drinking water to our consumers, our department supplied over 4.7 billion gallons of drinking water in 2024. Our drinking water is routinely monitored by utility staff with over 1,400 water samples collected to ensure compliance that meet or exceed federal and state drinking water quality standards. Several large capital improvement projects were completed to improve our delivery and conveyance systems. The Pocatello Creek Booster Station and Transmission Line was completed. The new station improves our delivery of drinking water to over 3,500 homes and businesses in the East Bench area. A 90-year-old water transmission line was replaced on the west side of the city through Centennial Park. Our utility crews also remained busy replacing two miles of aging water mains and associated service connections throughout city neighborhoods. Improvement areas included the Center Street Underpass, South Harrison Avenue, Garrett Way, Colorado Street, and the Wingate and San Piper Neighborhood. In addition, construction started on two replacement wells that will increase our supply capacity of up to 4.3 million gallons a day and are expected to be completed in the spring of 2025.
Hello, I'm Levi Adams, Superintendent of the Water Pollution Control Department. Water pollution control was very productive in 2024, working on a variety of projects to improve operations and infrastructure in support of our mission to protect the public health and the water quality of the Portnife River and the groundwater in the aquifer underneath our city. The treatment facility cleaned over 1.2 billion gallons of water, exceeding regulatory standards by removing over 99.5% of all contaminants. The collection crew cleaned over 250 miles of sewer lines. The major focus of the department was the construction of a dewatering facility, the completion of a new mixing system in digester number three, the upgrade of the aeration system, and a new administration building.
Hello, I'm Eric Sees, Director of the Marshall Public Library. This year saw an exciting addition to the library. The Yost Ashcroft Exploration Center opened early in the year, and the upgrade of this room was funded by a very generous donation from both the Yost and Ashcroft families. Extra storage space, furniture were added so that we have an amazing, modern space to host children's programs. This addition has allowed us to offer more programs, particularly in STEAM, which is science, technology, engineering, arts, and mathematics. The library is very busy this year. We circulated almost 160,000 physical items and over 60,000 e-materials. We also hosted many programs for the public, including 351 programs for youth attended by 11,261 children from across the city. The library also had a very successful summer reading program this year. The theme was "Adventure Begins at Your Library," so we hosted many programs for children, teens, and adults over the summer themed around outdoor adventuring. We had 220 adults, 251 teens, and 528 children registered this year. The addition of Lookout Point across the street from the library seems to have increased participation this summer. We are looking forward to continuing to partner with the exciting events that happen there. Our new young adult librarian started this spring. One exciting program she has started is a teen writing club. They meet once a week to share what they have been working on and to collaborate. Several authors from around the state have visited this program to share writing tips and encouragement.
Hello, my name is Chris Abbott, Director of Pocatello Animal Services. The Pocatello Animal Shelter experienced an eventful and impactful year, working in collaboration with area businesses, the Friends of the Pocatello Animal Shelter, to foster community involvement and support for the animals in need. Our shelter hosted several beloved events that strengthen community ties while benefiting the animals. the animals, including Run with the Big Dogs, Subaru Loves Pets, our annual low-cost rabies clinic, the Holiday Pet Food Drive, and Pets Photos with the Grinch. We are also grateful to receive generous donations from individuals and businesses, which not only benefited the animals in our care but supported the animal owners throughout the community. One of the most significant achievements this year was our ability to increase volunteer and foster participation, both of which are vital for fulfilling our mission. In fiscal year twenty twenty-four, we were able to place one hundred and twelve animals into foster care. We also logged over four thousand volunteer hours. This is up from a little over thirty-three hundred in twenty twenty-three. In twenty twenty-four, we had one thousand and thirty-two adoptions and four hundred and twenty-six animals returned to their owners. We are proud to report that the Pocatello Animal Shelter has maintained its no-kill status for another year. This incredible achievement is thanks to the unwavering support of our community, whose commitment to adopting animals and providing them loving forever homes has made it all the difference. Additionally, our partnership with other shelters and agencies have played a vital role in transferring and rehoming animals, ensuring every adoptable animal has a chance to finding their perfect match. Thank you to everyone who has contributed to this success.
Hello, my name is Alan Evans. I'm the Airport Manager at the Pocatello Regional Airport, which is owned and operated by the City of Pocatello. We had a busy year in twenty twenty-four. The U.M. Suinaga Dreams Take Flight Origami Art Display was completed and dedicated. The display is a culmination of five years of work, countless volunteer hours, and substantial donations from the IFT and Vice Line Foundations and the Pocatello Blackfoot Chapter of the Japanese-American Citizens League. The resulting display is unique to any airport in the world. The exhibit boasts nine kusudamas, four tessellations fully framed and backlit, a display of one thousand cranes with six hundred of those being intricate heart cranes, and several arrangements of origami silk roses, each folded from a single sheet of paper. The craftsmanship in this exhibit is top-notch. From the origami pieces to the display cases, the entire display is an amazing piece of art. FAA Airport Improvement Grant Projects included a large amount of pavement maintenance on the majority of the ramp, including crack sealing, seal coat of over forty acres, and full reconstruction of almost two hundred thousand square feet of pavement on the east end of the ramp, ensuring adequate pavement strength for the Bureau of Land Management Wildland Firefighting Operations. Also completed was the update of the airport's master plan. The master plan provides a review of current airfield facilities, forecast of future projects, and alternatives for meeting those needs. The plan also provides alternatives to address some needed airfield layout changes to better comply with FAA design standards. Again, in twenty twenty-four, the airport saw several new hangars begin construction. The growing demand for private aircraft storage has resulted in many new hangars over the past couple of years. The master plan is also addressing the need by providing alternate locations for additional hangar spaces, as currently available space is fully utilized. The airport was very pleased to welcome its newest tenant, Pure Flight Poki. Pure Flight will offer flight instruction programs for both fixed-wing and rotary aircraft, providing much-needed pilot training.
Thank you for that wonderful video, and thank you, Marliese in particular, for your work on putting that together, and all of our staff who participated in that. That is really the way that I would like to close out the evening is by thanking all of our hard-working, dedicated staff, also our mayor, my fellow city council. It's really all of the hard work that all of us have put together that have made the projects that you saw in this video possible and made us have a very successful twenty twenty-four. Our goal is to continue that success into twenty twenty-five. We are committed to continuing our balanced, responsible, conscientious approach to budgeting and managing the city's funds. You can see in that video, I think, that it's that approach that allowed us to not only provide the services that our residents should expect, but also to catch up on a lot of much-needed maintenance around the city, to go above and beyond and provide some exciting new projects and facilities that we wouldn't have otherwise been able to afford. Again, I mentioned the ARPA funds and the hard work our staff have put into getting grant money to allow us to do more than we would otherwise be able to do. So, I think we've had a very successful year, and we hope to continue that into twenty twenty-five. We will continue to invest in our city and do as much as we can do to make this another successful year, but also the best city that it can be. So, I think it takes all of us working together, and I thank all of our staff in particular, but also my fellow council and the mayor, and all of our citizens who help support all of the efforts and the work that we're trying to do. So, thank you very much, and thank you for being here tonight, and Happy New Year. Thank you. Meeting adjourned, and I don't have to hit that.